All right. So I thought of calling the meeting to order. I want to welcome everybody for the January board meeting. First off, Scott would like to say thank you.
Well, this is board appreciation month. I just wanted to take time to point out the nice sign that was made for you on the wall and also acknowledge the cards that are in front of you. Hopefully, you've had a chance to look at it. There's nothing that makes your heart softer than a note from a child. And I did read a lot of them when they say, "We love you." That's pretty special stuff, so they probably don't know you, but they just have such sweet and tender hearts. So I wanted to acknowledge that. And then also, just a certificate of appreciation. I probably should have put it in order. But I want to say, I want to say thank you as well for your service. People, most don't understand the time commitment, the pressure, the weight of decisions or anything else that go along with being a board member.
Thank you, sir.
But you guys live it. And your help to me coming into this district has been tremendous in itself. This just gives us an opportunity to say thank you for your service. Thank you for your dedication to our kids. And thank you for your help as I'm moving on. So you are appreciated greatly.
Thank you. I'll just rewrite this part there. Thank you to the little kiddos and their classmates and their teachers. And the cards, they're cute, so very nice. Very much appreciated. Okay, next, I have the approval of the agenda. And we do not have anything to add.
I will move.
Thank you, David. Thank you, John. Motion by David, second by John to adopt the agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Six oh. TJ will not be here this evening. I should have mentioned that.
I wondered.
Okay, delegations, there are none. So we'll move on to approve the agenda, the consent agenda, excuse me, which includes the approval of the minutes for the special board meeting on December 21st and January 11th. The notesman's turn your packets. And then payment of bills, the charter report, and then court report, and also the recreation commission report, which is included in that.
Which I would point out, there is no recreation commission report because we don't have a representative at this time. And the building's reached out and there is nobody at this point that wants to take that on.
I am going to approve the consent agenda.
And for Gina?
I'll second.
And again. Okay, been motioned by Gina, second by Deb to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion? All in favor? Next, information items, action items. We'll turn it over to Scott.
When the school board elections changed, then school boards had the option to choose when they were going to elect officers. That is typically in January unless we pass this resolution that states that our current officers stay in place until July. So do you want me to read that resolution? Do you want to read it?
Do you want me to?
It needs to be read.
Does that help you?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, well, let's see. Okay, so this is resolution number 1101. The resolution to establish election of school board officers resolution. Whereas KSA 72-1133 requires boards of education to elect the board president and the vice president at the first meeting on or after the second Monday in January of each year or at later meeting date during the calendar year if so determined by the board at the first meeting. And whereas United Party School District Number 298, Lincoln County, Kansas must act each year on or after the second Monday in January or the later dates, later meeting dates, excuse me, during the calendar year to establish when it will elect its president and vice president. Be it resolved with the Board of Education of the United Party School District Number 298, Lincoln County, Kansas will elect its school board president and vice president at its first meeting at the Board of Education in July of 2021. So that's what that says. Okay, so do I have a motion to approve the resolution? John, you're second. Thank you, Brady. Okay, motion by John, second by Brady. The USC 298 Board of Education adopt resolution number 1101 and resolution to establish election of school board officers as outlined in addendum number one. Any discussion?
Didn't we have it that way not too many years ago?
We started last year with the elections when they changed. Then we changed. We always changed in July before, when elections changed. And so you would be changing that role right in the middle of the school year. And so I think it was last year that we started doing it in July, even though your term was starting in January.
Okay.
So, yeah, if that makes sense. Is that clear, Mudd? But normally, you wouldn't have taken office until July because you would have been elected until April. So your first board meeting would have been July.
Okay.
So we're just getting, we're keeping this on the same track of July because that way it coincides with this school year.
Yes.
If that makes sense to you. All right. Any more votes? Sorry. All right, six oh. I should ask if there's any more discussion. Sorry. Okay, so calendar modification for February 15th, 2021, and April 19th, 2021.
So on this particular agenda item, per the completion of negotiations, February 15th was an in-service day, full day. Part of negotiations was to give that as a full school day off, staff and students alike, and not have in-service. So I know we've had a lot of calendar modifications, but unfortunately, given our current uncertainty, we just have to keep addressing this when it comes up. So per the negotiations agreement on paper, we agreed to a February 15th day off. So that needs to be changed to a no-school day from an in-service day. The April 19th date, I am asking that that become an in-service day instead of a student contact day. I applied for the waiver that allows us to have up to 20 hours of in-service time, and that counts as a full student contact day. Typically, professional development and in-service days are half-contact days. But KSD passed a resolution that stated for up to 20 hours, we could count it as a full day. The reason I'm asking for that specifically, I had Dr. Randy Watson, the commissioner, scheduled to come on that February 15th day to speak to our entire district staff. And when that became a day off, I was lucky enough to get back on his schedule and he had that April 19th day open. And he will be in 298 at noon. And all of the board is certainly welcome to attend. He will address our entire staff, which I've heard him speak. He's an outstanding speaker. And I think it's just kind of an honorary big deal to have the commissioner of education here. So those are the two dates that need modified on the calendar. And then we'll get that word out and change the calendars throughout the system.
So do I have a motion?
I'll move that we make February 15th a no-school day and April 19th an in-service day.
You're done? John? Okay, motion by Deb, second by John. At USC 298, Board of Education approve February 15th, 2021 as a no-school day instead of an in-service day. And April 19th, 2021 will become a district in-service day with no students, only staff instead of the regular school day. Any discussion? All in favor? Six oh. Okay, next, the disc golf expansion. Any questions? Can I talk a little bit about last one?
The map went in, is in your pocket again. It's certainly open for discussion. And I would ask that you have whatever necessary discussion you feel like you need to have. But I would ask that we could move forward with partnering with the frisbee golf people and with the city and start that liaison kind of a thing that I was talking about, that cooperative effort, and allow them to follow that map that's on the addendum. Basically, they would be installing those cages. And then I haven't talked to anybody. I don't know if they'll continue to expand those concrete pads that they did for the nine holes prior to the big tournament that they had. But chances are, they will put those concrete T-boxes, if you will, scattered about as the map indicates as well. My expectation would be that then in the spring that our kids start using that. If we need to look at buying some frisbees for that, whatever, they're a special frisbee and they do different things. But I would be in favor of giving that equipment for our PE departments and having them to have that access around the high school.
It looks like most of them pretty much stay away from the school building as far as getting, I don't know, throw a hard frisbee. Do they go through windows? Do they break windows? I don't know anything about that.
No, they're not too. They're not too hard, no.
They're not too hard, so.
I would think they'd give a permission to do as they show on here.
I guess I have to, John? Thank you, Deb. Motion by John, second by Deb. The USC 298 Board of Education approve the disc golf expansion proposed by Adam Boy as outlined in addendum number two. Is there any more discussion? Okay, all in favor? Six oh. I have a meeting out there. Sydney will have that meeting out there and the disc golf. All right, so next, reapproval, which is addendum number three.
And Brenda's going to present this E-rate is an interesting thing.
Yes. Okay, so our Form 470 allowable contract date was breached. Remember the Form 470 is where we put out the RFPs for vendors to bid on those deratable items. Now, we need to, we did a bid evaluation. We need to approve them so we can move forward with the Form 471 so that we can tell SLB what it is we want so that we can get that funding commitment and move forward. This year, we will get an 80% discount. Remember, that's based on, that we're a rural school and it's based on our free and reuse lunch percentage. The first one was our category one. And in the addendum, it has a LAN for L S to annex. It's the LAN that connects all three buildings. So that's there. And our only vendor that bid on that was Eagle for $1,250. The category two and three items, you will see that what we use for the bid evaluation. And again, Eagle won that bid. And then the high school wireless LAN, Eagle won that bid as well. And the firewall, Eagle won that bid evaluation as well. And all of the, all of this is based on, except for the priority one, we have to have it. But the rest of it is based on E-rate approval and whether or not it's in our budget.
It makes about as much sense to you as it does me. Here's how I kind of summarize it. We have to have modern technology. And it just simply costs money for our kids to have access and our staff to have access to what they need. The fact that we get 80% discount that's basically funded is a huge benefit to us. So when Brenda and I opened up these requests for proposals and there is a scoring system, it just so happened the company that we deal with on a regular basis was the company that won every single aspect of it, which makes it an easy transition. And there's really no, it's just something that we have to do.
I should say five, right? Five, about Eagle, are they trying to run?
Yeah.
Now, and as Brenda said, probably the biggest deal is to make sure that we get the E-rate fund and that we also have the budget to do this. So it's not mandatory that we move on absolutely everything. It's approval for us to do what we can do.
Yeah, it's 80%.
Is that fair, Brenda?
Right. So it's the LAN, the maintenance, the wireless at the high school, and the firewall. And it's all contingent upon E-rate approval and our budget. Does it have a total?
Well, on the maintenance, we basically give them a retainer, if you will, and they bill against us. They bill against that until we either use it up or we don't use it all. And my understanding is we haven't used it all.
It just carries forward.
In the past.
And then we only request the 80% discount on the items that qualify for E-rate.
And the others, the white area networks and the firewall, are just a simple necessity.
I didn't know if you knew the total. The total cost for that is what I was asking.
Well, not knowing what that maintenance will be, we wouldn't be able to.
It's, we pay the $6,000 and then we get some back. And then the wireless, the Eagle, is $23,195.10. And then we would pay 20% of that, request that back. And then the firewall is the $11,588.49 plus the $1,600. And then we would pay that. Sometimes the firewall isn't fully discounted. A portion of that might not be ratable, but majority will be. It depends on.
So it's still expensive for $42,330, but then we would get 80% of that back, basically.
Basically, yeah. And then that monthly fee for category one. That's what we currently have and that's what it currently is, so.
All right. Thank you, Brenda. Do I have a motion?
I would move. Is that me?
What do I do? Pass for long?
I move that based on the criteria being that, plus having the funding, that we would go with for print's addendum three.
You're second.
I'll second.
Thank you, Deb. Okay, motion by Gina, second by Deb. The USC 298 Board of Education approve the E-rate contract based on E-rate percentage and budget constraints as outlined in addendum number three. And the winning company is Eagle Communications. Okay, all right. So, right, so is there any discussion? Sorry about that. All in favor? Okay, next, the phone system upgrade.
Well, I'd Brenda kind of explain this to her. A phone guy got ahold of us and wanted to pitch a new phone system that no charge to us at all. And after we got looking at it, we realized that our phone contract actually is expiring with Ideatech. So we did put it out to bid also. And I'll let you go from there with the details.
I emailed three or four other vendors and Ideatech was the only one that backed with me. The other one didn't meet the deadline. So basically, Ideatech, we have 85 phones, extensions. And then we have groups of bell systems, intercom groups, ring groups, I guess. And then we have three fax lines that they host. This system will be web-based so that we can manage it currently. Like if I need a name changed on a phone, an extension line, I have to contact them, they change it. And then I have to go reboot the phone here. This way, we can just manage it all. They will bring in all new phones at no cost. There's a few more capabilities with that system than what we currently have. And it's about $14 more a month. And then we have a one-time charge for our bell ringers at $700. Our bell system, our intercom system was antiquated. If you remember, well, some of you will remember back when we switched Ideatech, okay? And then they came in and it was all integrated into their phone system so we didn't have to buy a separate system, intercom system or bell system. So that's kind of like why we like it.
So help me understand what this first guy wanted to do for us.
This was Ideatech. He just came in wanting to pitch us an upgrade on phones. And that's when we discovered that the contract was expiring and we needed to shop for vendors anyway. And then they came, well, they were the only respondents. So he was able to pitch those phones. And I don't want to contradict you, but we currently pay $15.29 a month. And this new total will be $15.20. So we will get all brand-new phones and upgraded and higher capability phones. And it is a five-year contract, just like we've had before, but the monthly cost will go down $9.
They don't have an upgraded system.
Thank you, Brenda. My motion.
I will move.
Okay, David, thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you, Brady. Okay, motion by David, second by Brady. The USC 298 Board of Education approve the contract proposed by Ideatech Telecom LLC for a phone system upgrade of the phone service as outlined in addendum number four. Is there any discussion? All right, so all in favor? Okay, and then the December KASB policy updates.
So this is the usual KASB packet where they recommend updates to our policies. I do read these word for word, which is a good and you're welcome to as well. In your first few pages there, there is a chart that shows what policy, what rationale for the revision or addition, and the recommended action. And it's on that one with the blue bar at the top that just kind of summarizes everything. Most of this has to do with language changes. Some of it is health things. Some of it's communicable diseases, as you can see. The biggest change I found when I read through this was the waiver of attendance policy.
Okay, that one, I was very confused by.
Yeah, you do have to, anytime a student wants to withdraw from school at 16 or 17 years old, you're required by law to have an exit interview and parent permission. So in that policy there, they have a suggested, simple, one-page form. But what they did on the backside, you have, when you have this exit interview, you have to go over employability at different levels of education, earning power at different levels of education, things like that. So the big thing they did was update that to 2018 numbers. And that's the bar chart on the back. If you actually find that compulsory attendance or it's not, it's on the back, it's on the second page. So this shows unemployment rate, median weekly earnings. And it just gives you a chance to have an interview with a student that doesn't want to continue school and have an opportunity to say, you just understand that this is the reality. If you don't finish this level of education or if you want to go on. That was the most significant change in the policy updates that I could recognize. A lot of it, other was just verbiage change and verbiage strike. So it'd be my recommendation to approve these policies. And then they'll just go into our book under our, we'll replace those pages.
Do you approve that or do you disagree? I move that we accept, approve the addendum five as presented to us.
Thank you, Gina. I'm second. Thank you, Brady. Okay, motion by Gina, second by Brady. The USC 298 Board of Education approve the December KASB policy as follows. EBBZ, GAR, JBE, JBCA, JVC, JHCAA. And table of contents is outlined in addendum number five. Any discussion? All in favor? Six oh. Okay, next is COVID update.
Okay, this one is a fascinating one. So on December 31st, when the latest COVID act was signed, they did not include the Family First Coronavirus Act. What that did was take away an employee's right to those 80 hours. Do you remember that chart that we discussed earlier in the year that if you're quarantined or sick, you get up to 80 hours of paid time that doesn't count against your sick leave, bank, or personal leave? Well, for some reason, that was not a part of the last package that went through. And it's sunsetted on December 31st. So in one of my many conversations with Luke Sova, the attorney at KASB, we discussed this. And he had drawn up this resolution that I edited and put in our district numbers because most districts are using this resolution to extend that benefit because most people feel it's very unfair that if you got quarantined or sick in the first semester, then you got up to 80 hours of paid leave. If you get sick or quarantined in the second semester currently without this resolution, then the employee will be forced to use their own personal sick time to do that. So what this does is just allow school boards, and he drew this up from whoever, whatever districts wanted it, and he had already drawn it up. districts wanted it, and he had already drawn it up, or I call it, so people are asking. And this allows to us to act as though that FF-CRA never expired, and we just will allow our employees to continue that benefit under that act, which I feel is the absolute fairest thing that we can do. So with the approval of this resolution, and we probably need to read it too, that will allow our employees not to fear having to go through an illness or quarantine and lose time.
I want you to read the resolution. Okay.
Do you want me to do this one?
Well, it doesn't matter. I, I'm good. Get your breath there. All right, so this is resolution number one, 1102, FF-CRA Benefit Extension. Whereas the novel coronavirus has caused COVID-19 infections throughout the United States beginning in early 2020 and continuing to the present time, and whereas the United States Congress is recognizing recognition of the need to limit spread of virus, passed the Family First Coronavirus Response Act, FF-CRA, to provide paid employee leave under certain circumstances, and whereas the FF-CRA is scheduled to expire on December 31st, 2020, and has not been extended beyond that date at this time. And whereas USD 298 continues to experience infections among its students and staff, and recognizes the need to permit employees to take paid leave in the event of infection or quarantine for COVID-19 in order to reduce the likelihood of virus spread in the district at least throughout the end of the 2021 school year. Now therefore, the Board of Education and USD 298, Lincoln County, Kansas, adopts and enacts the following provisions to remain in force through the end of the 2021 school year unless rescinded earlier by the Board. Number one, provisions of the FF-CRA pertaining to infection on quarantine of an employee appearing at section 5101a, 1, 2, 3, and 4 of the FF-CRA shall be treated as if extended, and the benefits allowed therein will be provided to all employees of USD 298 and as if the Act remained in force and effect. The provisions of the FF-CRA found section 2301 and section, sorry, section 5101a5 of the Act will grant, which grant up to 12 weeks of paid leave in the event the school or daycare provider for the employee's children closes out or became unavailable due to COVID-19 will not be extended or given effect unless renewed or extended by act of Congress signed into law by the President. In the event the FF-CRA is extended or amended by law, then the provisions of this resolution shall be immediately void, and USD 298 shall follow all provisions of the Act as written.
I assume.
Thank you, David. And Sabrina. Motion by David, second by Bree. The USD 298 Board of Education approved resolution, number one, 1102, FF-CRA Benefit Extension as outlined in addendum number six. Any discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Okay, then we need to adopt or accept a $500 donation from Insurance Planning.
I move to accept the donation from Insurance Planning.
Thank you, Dan.
One second.
Thank you, Gina. Motion by Deb, second by Gina. The USD 298 Board of Education accept the $500 donation from Insurance Planning Inc. of Hays, Kansas. Any discussion?
All right, just, they do this annually, it's my understanding, and so generous donation, you know, we're thankful to have that, and we'll take it to good use.
All right, thank you. All on paper? Six oh. Thank you. The procurement procedures outlined in your packet, addendum number seven.
This was at the request of TJ last time that we addressed this Procurement Services Handbook at the next board meeting, so what I've done is go through, and I have changed the, if you'll remember our discussion, the state statute says that bid processes start at $20,000. But when we were looking at those HBAC units, it was pointed out to me that we had to get bids on anything over $4,000. And I had expressed to you that that kind of ties my hand in the sense of emergency. Not even being able to go to my spending authority of $10,000 without having to go through a bid was very cumbersome, and it didn't allow the district to react in a timely manner. So I have struck the old amounts, and they have red lettering and a stripe through, and in a yellow highlight, we've put the new amounts that are more reflective of state statute. I think the board needs to understand that I only have a spending authority of $10,000, so this is not increasing my spending authority to $20,000. This is increasing the amount of dollars that have to be bid so that then we, as a board, can react. From $10,000 to $20,000 needs your approval, it's above my spending authority. But this allows us to get to that $20,000 mark without going through a cumbersome bidding process. We can accept quotes, I can reach out to vendors or service people, and then we can move forward, and we'll start that formal bidding process more in line with the state statute. This is not something that you need to act on tonight. It is an information or action item, but if you want time to digest this new verbiage, by all means, I want you to feel comfortable with this move.
So what are your thoughts, opinions on that? You want to move with it, or you want to wait until next month? Can we shake hands?
I don't see any issues with that.
I don't have any issue with it.
I think it's smart to put ourselves in a position where we can move quickly if needed.
Okay? Yeah? Fine? Okay. All right. I need a motion to approve that.
I move that we approve addendum seven, procurement procedure changes.
Hard work to say it. Thank you, Gina.
All second.
Thank you, Brady. Motion by Gina, second by Bree. The USD 298 Board of Education approved the procurement procedures as outlined in addendum number seven, changing the dollar amounts for formal and informal bids. Any more discussion? All right, so all on paper? Six oh. Okay, mileage reimbursements.
It's kind of interesting thing. The federal mileage rate is 56 cents per mile. It was decreased 1.5 cents per mile. If we pay above that, then we could have tax consequences to us as a district. So what KASB or KASB is recommending is that we adopt the federal mileage rate, which actually reduces our mileage payout to match the federal rate so that we don't exceed it and have issues with that.
All right, thank you. Motion to approve.
I move that we approve the new state mileage, excuse me, federal mileage rate.
I assume.
Thank you. You took me, that's what you said. All right, so motion by Deb, second by David. The USD 298 Board of Education reduced mileage to 56 cents per mile compared to the federal mileage rate. Any discussion? All on paper? Six oh. Okay, next. Early retirement program.
Okay. So we have an early retirement program that can pay out up to $30,000 to an employee over time when they retire. When we are looking at financial savings, we have to look at absolutely everything. Nothing is a sacred cow. So there is a clause in the negotiated agreement that says the board can act on the early retirement plan as long as they do so prior to January 15 of that school year. The important thing is that if the board moves to rescind the retirement plan, our employees are protected for 18 months. So if you would approve rescinding that plan, it stays in effect for 18 months to allow people, well, to not have people just get cut off immediately. Retirement packages are an important part of a district, and I didn't share these sheets with you because I honestly haven't had time to digest them yet. But what most districts are moving towards is more of a 403B contribution with the possibility of employees matching that contribution. Jordan Webb in Salina, who does our financial planning aspect for employees, he does this for many, many districts. Manhattan just moved to it this year. Big districts are doing this. It is a cost savings to a district, to be honest with you, and that's what we're looking for. But what it also allows is us to be contributing to a retirement account on an employee's behalf. You can pick an employee-only contribution, or you can do a match plan. And no matter what you do with this early retirement program that we currently have in place, I will continue to research best practices on plans like this. I have experience with one of these in another district, and some places will stair-step this in so that senior teachers don't only have this for a year or two, if they're five years or less. As Jordan explained to it, it can be a sliding scale on contributions in some districts. I'm just saying this as an example, not as a proposal. Some districts will say, for this X number of years to retirement, it might be a four-to-one match, and for this middle section, it might be a three-to-one match, and a two-to-one, and then new teachers coming in, it would be one-to-one because the goal is to have longevity, and the goal is for someone to see that they're having an account that grows in value all the time. So that is the, kind of, the goal of these matching plans, these 403B plans. They also have a vesting time, so I believe Manhattan, if I remember right, was 15 years. Most districts do a 10-year vesting, and part of the strategy is that because of the natural attrition of staff members that leave that aren't fully vested, then that money stays in the system, and a lot of times, it can become more self-sufficient between teachers that are just leaving and not vested and taking the district's share of the contributions. They have access to theirs, plus the interest that their share earned, and the district keeps the district contribution plus the interest that the district's contribution earned. So it's a different model, but a lot of districts are going to this kind of a model. So I guess the major points of this, if you wish to rescind the early retirement, it is in effect for 18 months. So teachers that would retire this year are eligible, teachers that would retire next year would still be eligible. But in the meantime, we could be transitioning to a 403B employee-only or a 403B match sort of a program.
And so that would be the current staff, the retired staff and the current staff would be affected if you would get rid of that. The ones that retired will still get their payouts by?
Yes, this year and next year.
But then have to, they're paid out, and it's just?
Right.
The current staff?
Right.
So that way you kind of go back into the current staff's pockets, per se?
Right. The savings that we could realize would then be spread out, it would be available to be used towards salaries. And I've told you before, I am a big fan of salary increases. I think it's huge for recruitment, and I think it's huge for retaining quality teachers.
I like this 403B option because I think that will be good for our staff, too. I like that.
And he is more than happy to come and present to you as an expert.
Yeah.
And if you'd like me to try to get him here on February, I can read all this stuff, and I can look at the numbers, and we talked on the phone for quite a bit. But he could actually, he's taken all of our employees and put a schedule together. He's already putting these scenarios together, and he could make recommendations on what would be the biggest bang for the buck on that thing. But I want to reiterate, teacher salaries are critical to the success of a district. And as TJ's pointed out, we're in the bottom third of 1A districts, and I don't like being in the bottom third of anything. And I think we need to be at least at the median, and if we want to be super attractive, then we need to be better than most. And how we get there is by restructuring our finances and finding ways to save money because, one of my favorite sayings, I've shared with the office staff today, "Hope feels good, but it's not much of a strategy." So we need to strategically move forward if we're going to intentionally attract and retain quality staff members, and salary is a big deal in that. So I will always push for better salaries. But I have to find money to do that with.
Are you wanting to start that this year?
I need more information from him to see if this is a first-of-the-year kickoff. I simply don't know the timing for a program like this. As I said, I haven't had time to really just scan it, and I talked to him on the phone, but I wanted you to be aware that there are options that we can do that are beneficial.
I ask to be known by January 15 of this year if this is an issue, if you want to move on this year, otherwise I should wait till next January.
So this is our window to do something if we want to do it.
Right.
I would, I would ask that somebody move that we push this to an executive session on negotiations, and then we can have discussion there and bring it back after?
Okay.
Item 18 as an 18A to readdress early retirement.
Yeah, I think, I think so, because if we need to, to have a greater agenda, we need to.
That's fine. Then I move that we bring that back as 18A, executive session negotiations.
After? No, after executive session.
Yeah, 18A.
Yes. Not part of the, not part of the executive session, but afterwards.
Right.
Yes.
All second.
Okay, thank you. All right, I need a motion by Gina, second by John, to bring up early retirement again as an action item, number 18A, which would be after our executive session for negotiations. Any discussion? All on paper? Six oh. Thank you. Right. Principals' report. It's like Ms. Smith, we have you first.
Yes, I just wanted to add a couple of things that I have put in my report. As you might have heard, today started the Great Kindness Challenge, which is sponsored by a global initiative, the Foundation for Peace. That is one thing that we're really working on, and this is the time that I implemented this plan and started. So we're challenging all the elementary students to perform 500 acts of kindness, starting today all the way into the end of January. And although kindness is something we model at school, we were really encouraging them to do that at home and in the community. And if they have an act of kindness and it's witnessed by an adult, the adult signs off on it. And as a school, if they're able to do 500, January 29th, they receive a pajama day and other incentives. We would encourage, as we said, this is a global movement, any business or organization that would like to partner with us and continue to promote kindness. Now more than ever, kindness and thought and word and writing is so important in our country. So we would encourage any organization, business that would like to join us, we have ideas for you. I would refer you over to Mrs. Potagek, our counselor, and you can email her at potagek.sawyer@usd298.com, or you can call the school and speak to her. And she has a whole toolkit with a plethora of different ideas that you can include for your business organization for this month of January to highlight the idea of kindness. Another extension from that program was we looked at coins for change, and we are encouraging our students to bring in any amount of change they can. Little bits of change add up. And one of our custodians, Mr. Finch, is undergoing cancer treatment right now. So as whatever change that we can raise, that will be donated to him to offset his costs. So we're just really pledging that idea of kindness, and we would, like I said, we'd love for anybody in this community to join us for this month of kindness. So I just want to put that out there. Thank you.
Any questions for Mrs. Smith? Hey, Mrs. Walter.
There is a couple of things, or just one big thing, I guess, that I wanted to discuss with you guys, or at least bring to your attention. We really need to make some decisions on our track meets for this current year. We are scheduled to have three track meets. They're on the calendar right now, but with the condition of our track, we're not allowed to have them. So we have two options. One option is to not, to cancel the track meets altogether. The other option is to host the track meets in an alternate location. If we cancel track meets, we have to be careful because if we don't have a long-range plan for the track and have plans to have continued track meets at the track, other schools are going to go to other track meets, and then once you lose them, they're really hard to get back. If we choose to host at an alternate location, TESKET is receptive to allowing us to have track meets there. There are issues with that. It takes about 25 adults, 30 students to run a track meet. And when it's in Lincoln, it's, it's pretty convenient to have people in Lincoln, teachers, community members, students, just to go to the track and work the track meet. When we have it at TESKET, we'd have to find 25 adult workers, teachers, community members, and 30 students to go over, approximately 30 students to go over and do that as well. So how do you do that when the track meet starts at 3:00? So we discussed having all-day track meets because some schools do that. Some schools do have an all-day track meet starting at 10:00, and they use their staff, and they require their staff to go work the track meet. High school, we cannot do that because KESHA only allows two track meets before 3:00 in the afternoon, and our track team is already scheduled for their two 10:00 track meets. So we'd have to keep it at 3:00. Junior high, I'm not really sure yet if we can. I know most of their track meets are all day, so I don't know if there's a limit on their, the times that you can have track meets for junior high. So I guess what I want to discuss, or what I'm asking for, is some flexibility in how I would get, make a track meet happen in an alternate location. A thought that I had would be to use, ask teachers to go over and work, which would mean that they would take some of their contract day, some of their non-contract day to work at the track meet because field events start at 3:00, over 5:30, 6:00, potentially field events over about 9:00, 8:30, 9:00. So if I'm, if we're asking teachers to go work some of those events, we could comp them with maybe not having to check in on a workday at the end of the school year. We could do an early release and allow for that to happen. We would only do two instead of three if we were to allow to do that. We would do, still continue the junior high track meet in April and keep the Thompson relays because that is a track meet we've hosted for over 50 years. We would just eliminate the Lincoln Invitational Track Meet. So I guess I don't, we don't, we need to know sooner than later because we need, we need to let schools know if we're not going to have a track meet, we need to let schools know so that they can find somewhere else to, including our team, somewhere else to go. So I guess I just need to know your thoughts on how you feel about early releases to allow for staff to go work at track meets, and if they do choose to work at the track meet, that they can be comped the workday at the end of the school year, some of the workday time.
I would add on there, if I could, just to give understanding. We, we had early release scheduled for the NPL tournament that was rescinded, so this would basically be using two of those days as a swap. This wouldn't be in addition to anything. But again, it is, it is calendar mayhem this year, and that track is just presenting yet another issue that you need to think about. But those early releases in my mind would take the place of those NPLs without any harm.
Yeah.
And then Mrs. Walter did discuss the thought of if a staff member would go over there and work, is that the, the student's last day is a half a day? And we would allow those workers to take that half day that is teacher workday, they can go home and then come back the next day, which is a full teacher's workday in the school year. So that comp time would come on that May date, and I don't have it on top of my head.
May 20th.
So the teachers would essentially like leave when the kids were released?
Yes.
In exchange for working at the meet.
Yes.
Right.
Because if you would work.
If it were every teacher in the district that went over there and volunteered, then every teacher in the district could leave when the students leave. Anybody that shows up to participate, because there's always stuff to do. Track meets are very.
If they're willing to give their evening.
Yes.
Because they're going to stay.
Even if they're there on call and they just trade out with somebody, or they'll supervise a concession stand, because the early release would be district-wide, just like a whispering yell. And if 100% of staff members show up and say they're here for it, then by God, 100% of them can leave with the students on that day as a comp. Otherwise, there will be a roster that's maintained.
Okay.
Correct?
Yes.
She has something else, Kristy?
No, that's, that was it. That was, and we need to, we kind of need to know pretty quickly.
I know, it's a shame, but I mean, yeah, we can't do anything this year and without a plan. I would hate to, it's just me thinking, I would hate to completely cancel them, like you said, they're going to go somewhere else. So I think, my personal thing is it's probably a best, better opportunity option is to have an alternate location until we can get a decision on the track.
I would agree with that. I would rather move them. So. I would rather move them. And I think that's completely fair. Anyone that wants to work them should be able to get out early on that last day. I think that will be a fair trade. And we've worked them early out for NPL, so we might want early out for these two days.
And Mrs. Walter can work out the details, but I'm sitting here just thinking, instead of the half a day for the student release, if they want to have that half day and then work till noon, and the early release is the very absolute last day for their workday and then their release.
And work out.
That would be up to admin.
Do you need a motion for that, or a motion to do that?
I think if, here's what I would think. I think you probably need more details and dates, but if she knows that you support this idea.
We can take action on that.
We can, we can take action in February as far as the calendar early releases, but what we need to know is, are we going to uphold our contracts for a track meet right now, knowing that this plan's going to be put into place? Is that?
Yeah.
Would that work?
Yep.
So, since this is a board, you should proceed on as alternate location?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I want to make sure he's okay. I can't see him.
Okay.
I can't see his eyes.
So would you like, next board meeting, to have more of a detailed outline of what that's going to look like?
The actual dates for new release, so we can make the calendar modification, the expectations of what day will be the comp half day, et cetera.
Okay. Yep, I can do that.
And thank you for your support on that, board. This is not an easy, this track, it is a mess. It just simply is.
Mrs. Walter, anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Mrs. Walter? All right, moving on. Mr. Finch, oh, you're up again.
Yeah. The first thing I'd like to, to point out to the board is, when I look through old files of cost-saving ideas, I see a lot of things in there. Turn the lights off in between when classes are in session in the hall, basically. Cut back on buying Kleenexes. Things that are not materially impactful in the big picture. They don't have a lot of bang for that. But one thing that never seems to digress is the expectations of a school district to do school business. The state continues to pile more and more reports, more and more data, because one of the things that I see on some of those folders of cost-saving ideas is reduce the board office staff. So the first thing I want to do in my report is to let you know how hard this staff has been working to get contracts written, to get contracts out to employees, working weekends. We all work what's technically not paid time around here. We take work home with us. We come in on Saturdays and Sundays when we need to. And I hope that you appreciate the staff, not me included, but the staff besides me, and the amount of effort that they put into their jobs, because we wouldn't be where we are without Greta and Norma. They are indispensable because the number of students we have does not reduce the expectations of the state upon us. The paperwork is still there, and it is a lot of work. And I am stinking proud to be a part of this team at this district office, because I think we do a heck of a job down here getting things done. And it is busy, and it is busy every single day. And so I want to just give a shout out to this team down here that works so well together. We work hard, we laugh a lot, we enjoy our jobs, and we enjoy each other. And I couldn't ask for a better team than what we have here. So I just want to say thank you. And you put in a ton of hours with contracts and back pay and going back to August, and we get it done. We get it done. So COVID update, we continue to have minimal impact, and I could not be happier about that. As I continue to hear horror stories from other districts that are having problems, that are having shortages, we are fortunate beyond understanding. With that, I think, comes a sense of complacency. So I still try to remain diligent with the admin team that we do the right things, that we continue to disinfect effectively and frequently. But right now, we are continuing, who would have thought with the information that we had at the first of the school year, that we would be able to maintain effective face-to-face instruction? And here we are in January. Everybody had planned for a remote school for a majority of this year. And by God, we haven't had to do it. Our staff is dedicated, and our kids have benefited. And we are in a great position right now. So I'm happy about that. A lot of people are talking about vaccinations. The word that I received from county health is that our educators are in the Tier Two, but we're looking at end of January, earlier February at the earliest for any vaccination program to be put in place here. So until that happens, and even after that happens, we will still be diligent with masks and social distancing and disinfecting because we don't know yet that that's going to be a cure-all. I'm sure you've all read about these morphine viruses, and we don't know what's going to happen. We will just continue to react and continue to work together as a team to do what's best for our kids in 298. And so far, we're doing all right. So I'm happy about that. Even though I was sick with COVID over Christmas and I had some challenges with that van purchase, the team at the board office executed that purchase without me, although we talked a little on the phone, but it is waiting on Kansas Highway Patrol inspection, and then when it's delivered, it will be ready to, we can't transport students without a KHP inspection, so when that's done, it will be delivered, and then we'll be good to go with that. Curriculum, that in my mind, number one, the importance in my mind is effectively educating kids. That's our business, that's our mission. And I know there's curriculum issues here. And we have started discussions in our admin meetings about what's that going to look like? Where do we need to go, and what do we need to do? So that is a high priority. And all of the savings that we are looking for, and all of the effective and efficient financial situations that we are striving for, that has to be our number one goal, is educate our own kids to the best of our ability, for the best of their future. On that note, I am asking for your support, and I know this has been a flip-flop here. So I'm just going to tell you, I'm asking for your support. I want to send Green Bush $3,500 to become a part of their school improvement program. That $3,500 will get us an MTSS trainer, Jennifer Haney, if anybody knows her, I think she's phenomenal. That will get us professional development for our teachers, and that will get us included a strategic planner to come to this district and help us work on a strategic plan. We don't have one, so right now, I feel like there are problems galore, and every week there seems to be another one come up. And I feel like I'm hunting down these problems with a shotgun. And what I really need is to develop a strategic plan that involves the community, businesses, staff, everybody, to collectively prioritize so that I can have a bull's eye, and I can shoot with a rifle and not a shotgun. And we need a strategic plan to measure all of our decisions against. So I don't need your authority to spend that $3,500. I'm a Green Bush guy. I have been for 13 years. I have deep relationships there. I think they have more to offer, and I think they are better equipped to help us out where we currently are. So, that being said, I would like your support on that. Another thing, there, if you've heard about it, there is another round of federal funding coming, and they're calling it SRF II, or CARES Act II. We don't know an exact amount of, an exact amount right now, but it should be here in March. There are 15 points that you can spend it on. And they're interesting, and as I, as we get more and more details, I'll be sharing more and more with you as I learn about it. But there is another round of that CARES money coming from the feds, and we'll look to see how we can maximize the use of that. And we'll look to see how we can maximize the use of that for long-term benefits. HVAC units are in now at Street, everything is back ordered, COVID has messed up everything. They are in now, in-house and they'll be looking to try to get those installed as soon as possible. Even my rubber floor grant that I got for the weight room is we are still back ordered on that. And they're looking at maybe the end of February before we can even get that and the plan was to install it over Christmas break, so. The things that this, the things that this, I mean.
Maybe not just spring break.
Yeah, maybe spring break. The things that this has impacted is just amazing and fascinating to me. What are you giving an update on the track? I talked with Midwest or Mid-America's track this week on the phone. And they wanted to see where we were with their proposal. And I said, well, pretty much we're all shell shocked by your proposal and by the other company's proposal. So we had a pretty frank conversation. In order for us to have any sort of a track, we're going to have to be very creative. We had a, a long discussion of, and it came down to what do you think your district can afford? And I said, well, the district can't afford anything, but we are getting a committee together and we're going to be reaching out and we're going to try to solve this problem. It's our most populated activity. The more programs we cut, the less attractive we are to kids. So I talked to them about what does an asphalt track look like? Pour some asphalt, paint some lines on it. I ran on sender for all my high school career and the rich schools have an asphalt track. We had that conversation, we talked about where, we talked about maintenance. We came to this idea of if we, if, if this project could generate $400,000, could you build us something we can run circles on? And they are going back to the drawing board to see what they could do and give us something. We've had discussions of do we just make an asphalt oval and it's an activity track? And that's all it is and we seal it like you do a parking lot. We're trying to figure out how we can at least have a practice facility, even if we can't have a track facility as far as for meets. But something for kids to compete or to train on at least. And then the by, the byproduct of having such a place is that our community uses it. And there is very seldom a time I drive by that there isn't a car park there and somebody's out walking on that track. Typically, it's a two people, sometimes there's two vehicles and there's four, sometimes it looks like a whole group's getting together and walking around the track. So having it is important, but we're trying to get creative when we're trying to ask this company, how are you going to be able to help us do this? So that we can get a reasonable number to, to workforce, so. That's all I've got, information wise, if you have any questions?
Any questions for what? So moving on, next we have an executive session for legal matters. For 15 minutes. Have a motion.
I approve.
Senator David. Senator Gina. Motion by David, second by Gina, the USC 298 Board of Education, go to executive session at 8:15. For 15 minutes with the superintendent for the purpose of discussing legal matters concerning a contract. The Board of Education returned to open meeting at 8:30 in the Board of Education Conference Room. The session is required to protect the privacy rights with regard to legal matters concerning this contract. Any discussion? More favor? Six oh.